I'm just gonna say we're gonna start. Is that okay with everybody? I know she's a newbie, but let's, and I'll tell her we start on time. So, all right, with that, we're recording, so this is, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the city council work session for Minnetonka, January ninth, 2023. We have three items on our agenda for the work session. Water infrastructure funding, the joint letter discussion, a commercial school water rate tier discussion, and then our 23 water conservation campaign. With that, I'm just gonna start out real quick with the water infrastructure funding joint letter discussion to, so that the council knows where this is coming from. So Representative Dean Phillips has a quarterly mayor's meeting with all of the mayors in his district. And so at the last meeting, which was December or November, anyhow, sometime November, December, we went around the room and you kind of introduce yourself and they say to two minutes or less, say something about your city. Well, it just so happened that the new mayor-elect for Mound was there and he said, yeah, and our city is looking for funding. We're, we're working on state funding for our water treatment plant. Of course, my ears perked up. And then the next guy comes around and he says he's from the mayor-elect for Minnetonka Beach and they too are looking at state funding for their water treatment plant. So then I'm coming around and I say, guess what, guys? I think we're gonna be looking too. So what I talked to Jasper about is, you know, we need to maybe do a joint, you know, there's always strength in numbers. And so what I was thinking is if we sent out a letter to ask Mound and Minnetonka Beach if they'd be interested in kind of joining us in an effort to try and get state funding for this, because generally there hasn't been any state funding for this type of facility. But because of the costs, as we know, back when we built the facilities in 2015, they were about four and a half million each, and now we're looking at over 10 million. So the cost difference is significant and so I'm thinking it might be worth our effort.
Agreed.
Okay, so now I'll give that to you.
Yeah, just to continue that, we've, we've talked a little bit with Representative Dean Phillips, Chief of Staff. He's kind of given some insight and I'm reading an email from him. He says that, you know, strength in numbers is good, that we should emphasize that the cost of these things outweigh the amount of burden that we should put on our residents and that'd be a good way to approach it. The, the infrastructure bill that I think, or the infrastructure money that Mound is working on was something that we looked at. It was something that we were determined that we weren't eligible for through talking with Dean Phillips and his crew. But this would be approaching it in a different manner, potentially approaching both the federal bonding bill and the state bonding bill to try to get funding for the region for water treatment. So that would be the approach. You know, last year, the bonding bill at the state level did not pass, or didn't, I don't know if it didn't get voted on or it didn't pass, but there wasn't a bonding bill last year.
Is this a bonding?
I think they're gonna try to make it a bonding year because they missed the bonding year. I would anticipate. So there's likely a lot of people that want to get in on that. I think we have to continue to leverage our representatives, both at the state and federal levels, to see if we can and try to make the best case that we can, you know, using other people around us. So I mentioned that, you know, a regional treatment facility would be best. That would be like a slam dunk, like, but the topography of the area, we all know, is very challenging, doesn't work out that way. But if we approach it like this region needs assistance, then, then we can do that. So what I would do is reach out to like Mound, Minnetonka Beach, and then draft a letter, share a letter, and likely bring it back to council. They can look at it and we can send it off. And that's something that we could send to, you know, Kevin Anderson or anybody that we might want to, just to kind of get everybody involved that we can. Then we, I think we'd have to explicitly work with like Kelly Morrison and Andrew Myers to try to get them to be advocates for us in our region, which I think they likely will be. It's just that there's a lot of other representatives that are also gonna be advocates for other cities, so we gotta make, sell our best case that we can. So that would be the, the approach, likely in the next month, I would guess, by next month, probably first meeting, we'll bring something back. And then once we get that back, we can disperse it accordingly.
Okay.
If that sounds good.
And then kind of on that same vein, I was talking to Jasper today too. So I know you're going to the March ninth Capitol Day again, and I asked Jasper to join us as well. And if any other council members want to join us, that would be good because that's also another opportunity to talk to different representatives and senators from our state. So Claudia, you need, you need to be up here.
This is comical, please forgive me. Underestimate Minneapolis traffic. Sorry, thank you, everyone. You'll never forget me now.
Well, bring your computer up on, or just in the work session. So I told Peter, I kind of gave him a hard time. He was here five minutes early and I told him that we do start on time.
Of course, yes, thank you.
But welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll forgive you this time.
Seriously, it's just, it's too horrible. I'm never late and so I, of course. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. So it's March ninth. Look at your calendars. If you can join us, that'd be great. And then I don't know if there's other representatives, maybe we should talk to Kelly and/or Andrew Myers to see if there's anybody else we should be talking to that might be of help to us.
Yep, yeah, definitely. And I don't know if anybody else has been to one of these events. So you, you get on the schedule of the representative that you want to talk to. Sometimes they are in committee and then they can't come meet you and then they have somebody else talk to you.
Usually that, the day, so they know that the, the league has this day. So if you set up your appointment with them well in advance, a lot, most of the time you get it.
Yep, yeah. So then you can talk about them, you have, you know, a little bit of time with your talking points and, and we can, we can definitely formulate those based on some of those letters. So I would recommend it if you haven't done it. It's, it's interesting to get to the Capitol and participate in it. So I may attend, I think, I think the mayor brought it up, I might attend to.
You will attend?
I will attend. And we'll go from there. So if anybody else wants to, you sure can.
I'm not back to March 17th. I've done these, I've done these in Washington, in another industry, so I know what it's like, but they are fun and if I were here, I'd do it.
Okay, all right. All right, well, keep it in mind and let Jasper know if, if you want to attend. So then the next one is the commercial school water rate tier discussion.
Yes, I can, I can take that. This is kind of an extension of the, the last meeting, which two, we have new, two new council members, so I'll give a brief synopsis. Currently what we have going on in Minnetonka is we have three different account type tiers, residential, commercial, and school. One of the directions that I, that I received was to kind of look at and evaluate combining the commercial and school. And, and we kind of came up with a, a solution or a, I guess not a solution, but a recommendation as far as if we were to combine those, what that would look like. Currently, the, the commercial water rates have a tier of zero to 80,000, 80,000 to 150, and then 150 plus, 1,000 gallons. The schools go from zero to 700,000, 700,000 to 900,000, then over 900,000. So that's what we currently have. We've adopted those rates. Those are the current rates for 2023, as you can see in your packet. The commercial tier, so basically getting rid and kind of, kind of blending the two together, a possible solution to come up with would be zero to 300, 300 to 600, 600 plus. Couple of things that we've, we've discussed in the past was just what are the schools' irrigation plans? What are they doing? Last year, it was discovered by Mr. Peters that there's a well on their site that, that they could potentially use for irrigation, which is good because I think Kevin was kind of razzing us a little bit about, well, you guys put this well in and then you abandoned it. And we said, well, I don't think it's abandoned. So that was good news. It's kind of a, could be a solution to get them off of our system, treated water system to provide irrigation to, to some of their open space. They've looked at that, they've, they've looked at feasibly doing a project this spring for the, if you think about the campus, the Sunny Field, everything south of Sunny Field would, would, will be done. Kevin's indicated that that will be done in the spring. Anything north of Sunny Field will be kind of evaluated for feasibility in the spring. So that type of thing, he doesn't know if that will be part of the irrigation project in the spring. If they can get it all done in that time period, great, but there might be some environmental feasibility issues that they might run into just to get that longer pipe to that area. Keep in mind that I think the, just the general breakdown of their irrigation usage, the, the football field and that, that area on the south side is about 35 to 40% of their irrigation usage and the, and the north side is about 60%. So the majority of it won't be for sure done this spring. So that's, that's something to keep in mind when we, when we look at this. What we're looking for tonight is just a conversation about how we want to proceed with this, the timing of, of potentially adopting a rate where there's a blended rate if we want to do that. And then, you know, how we want, basically how we want to move forward with this. So we kind of have, you know, we can do this tonight. You do have the option to do it tonight on the agenda to adopt it as is. You can table that if you choose and then we can, we can do it at a later date potentially when, you know, we have some more finite information about the school's irrigation system. It's really up to city council. So we're looking for a conversation on that and, and, you know, that'll kind of drive what we actually do in the business item section of, of the agenda tonight for the regular meeting.
Questions or comments?
Okay, I assume that when you went through all of this, that you addressed the financial aspects of differences?
Yes. Yep, so I can, so we're projecting, I skipped that part, sorry about that. We're projecting various usage because we don't really know if it's gonna be a wet or dry year. You know, they're, right now they use about 6 million gallons for irrigation roughly.
Just for irrigation?
Just for, it's a little under 6 million gallons for irrigation. So if they can get off our system for that amount, you know, our revenue would go down. They would see, based on the commercial rates, about a 9% increase in their rate. So, but that's not very much because the amount that they're paying is less. So like the total amount that, that we're looking at is roughly about $900 a year if they get fully off of our system for irrigation. If they're not, then that varies on how much irrigation they're gonna use. That could go up to $9,000 a year. Let's say they don't go, the, the north end, north side of Sunny Field doesn't have any irrigation that's off of our system, it'd be about a $9,000 a year increase. So it's variable based on what they actually do for their irrigation.
So currently, they use about, what, 3.5% of our total, total, total water usage?
It's, yeah, it's, I think they're, they're about 3.5% of our revenue and about 3.2% of the actual water.
Water usage, so, under the current, and that's under the current existing?
Their 2022 usage, yeah.
Okay, so they're using about what they're, percentage wise, what they're paying for. So how would this, what would, or what's the percentage? How would that change then?
It'd be, it's within, it's non-material. It, it, it flows linear with what their reduction would be.
Okay, because, because they're gonna, they know they're gonna be irrigating the, the south side. They know that.
Yep.
So if that, if the south side is irrigated, then the north side, even if they still irrigate the north side, they're probably gonna reduce their, their costs, but they're gonna reduce their amount, so it's probably gonna be about the same.
It will, so yeah, let's just say their, their gallons pumped on the whole system goes, goes down to 2%.
Okay.
Their revenue will probably be around two point, the revenue received will probably be about 2.8, you know, and it'll be kind of linear with what we have right now as far as the ratio goes, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Is Kevin aware of the, these numbers that you just?
Yeah, so I did talk to Kevin this afternoon about this and went over all of this with him. He is aware of it. You know, he, he kind of, he said, well, if you guys adopt rates, you adopt the rates, you know, not really telling us what, telling me what he wanted to do. But, you know, I think it would be, you know, I, you know, a communication, I don't know. It'd be good to give them some additional time to kind of see what's going on, to understand what's going on. But it's, it's, he, he was impartial, I would say, about, about what it would be. He would just like to know if, if we do adopt it, so then they can budget accordingly, you know, for Q3.
And Q3, Q3 starts roughly June 21st, so if we adopt it tonight, he's got six months to plan.
Yeah.
They incorporate it into their 2023, 2024 budget, I assume.
Because I think their budget goes July 1st through.
Yeah.
And it probably wouldn't affect them too much for May and June. Because more, I mean, generally you're not.
From the earlier report that I got last time, their quarter two usage isn't, I mean, the high stuff hits in three and four, so.
I was saying to Jasper too, if, if whatever happens, so if we adopt this tonight and their, their bill is, you know, pretty high, we can always take a look at it and make an adjustment, time adjustment, or something like that too.
Would there be a way to write that into what we're saying?
No, not really, because what we have to do is adopt the fee and the fee is adopted by ordinance. And so you, you wouldn't want to write into the ordinance that we could make a one-time adjustment. I'm just saying it's a possibility that we could look at if that's, if it's super high, something like that, then we could say, well, we could look at it. We do this actually with residents. If they come in and they say, I don't know, you know, why this is so high, my water line was broken or whatever, and we've determined that it's the meter or something like that. We have made some adjustments occasionally.
We've had a real unique situations. I mean, not many over the years, but yeah, basically if they come in and say that they just can't, well, you know, something's wrong with the meter or something. Obviously administratively, we can't do anything. We've got to count for the decision if there is something that's an adjustment, especially that's material or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, they'd have to convey a hardship.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it seems to me that the school district is doing us a favor by getting off the system. It'd be great if they were in the south part of the city, but.
Yeah, yeah, really, yeah.
You know, I think they're helping us out in our cost structure and it's not a huge percentage of our revenue from the water programs. I'd like to avoid, you know, giving them a hardship, an added cost when they're already putting out money to, you know, build out their own system. So I would like to put it off for, you know, until they're done. I know from the previous council meeting that this has been ongoing for a while and so we need to move ahead, but it seems like we're within months of the resolution with the district. So it seems to me we should maintain some flexibility with them.
I mean, technically they, we have, because we adjusted the rates for the residents last year for quarter three, so they've already had flexibility to be prepared for this to be happening. We also helped them out by giving them the well, because we didn't have to do that.
So we didn't get any money?
No, they just, yeah, we just gave them the well.
There's infrastructure they have to put in.
Right, but I mean, we, we didn't charge them anything for the well, so.
Yeah, I'm sure that wasn't cheap.
Yeah.
It, I'm, I'm open. I guess I understand what you're saying, Peter. That's a good point. I'm neutral. I mean, whether we do it now or whether we do it in May, whatever, I'm, I'm open.
I've made it very clear, I'd like to do it now.
Yeah. That's the only reason I'm saying is, it, it ordered, it kind of to Peter's point, if it is a, a big hardship or, you know, a big, big number that increased number over last year, I do think it would be in our best interest to, in order to maintain a good relationship with the school, to try and look at that and then say, okay, we'll make a one-time adjustment if you guys are interested in doing that or considering that. We'd have to look at the numbers when it, when they come in.
And it could be a, hopefully a really, really rainy summer and it might not even be an issue.
I'm gonna go back to Jasper's comment that he, he has approached Kevin. Kevin was nonchalant about the whole thing. And so he, in his budget, may not think it's a big deal. I would say for assurances, he could go back again and say, we are gonna decide this and so, see if you get more of a reaction. Because if you're not gonna get any reaction, then if he's just taking it in stride, he's just gonna build in the budget and that's the end of it and we might as well do it.
Well, I think we should, I don't think we need to go back again to Kevin. He's already talked to him.
He knows about it.
He knows about it. So, I mean, again, I'm more in favor of just if we want to do this tonight, doing this tonight, and then making sure that if it is a really dry May and June and they have an exorbitant bill, that we just do a one-time consideration. That, that's kind of what I, I would do, but is there a problem with that or?
No, the only missing piece probably is, is depending on if they for sure can get to the, the north fields or, obviously if that, if they find out in three to six months that they really can't or it's gonna be cost prohibitive, then we're, then they're gonna have an ongoing, obviously much larger bill going forward. If they're not able to do it in six months or eight months or, you know, like.
But is, so are you saying, so we know the south side can be done, we don't know if the north side can be done, but without the north side being on their system, you're saying it's about a $9,000 annual increase, right?
That, that's about what we estimate based on what their 2022 usage was. 2022 was a dry year.
So again, if they know that that's going to happen, they know they're gonna have this increase, then, and we're giving that, so like, let's say they come in June and their budget or their bill is, you know, $15,000 higher than expected or than last year, we can make a one-time adjustment, but then they know moving forward that that's not gonna happen again, we're just gonna give them that one-time pass, if you will, but then they also know and then they can budget for it.
So you're saying just a one-time, we'll reduce this and after that, you're on your own.
Right, right. I mean, we can't keep going back and keep making adjustments, otherwise we might as well not do this tiered rate.
Well, Jasper, is that a fair characterization that Kevin was nonchalant or not concerned?
I would say, I mean, he, he basically said, if you guys pass the rates, you, you've passed the rates. I have the, I have the numbers here and I, I share these, we were, him and I were, I was crunching numbers to help him with, with kind of understanding what the numbers would be. So for, if we would do, if we would go with what's presented tonight and their usage was exactly the same as 2022, their bill would have went from $45,000 roughly to 63,000 in 2022. But then you have to subtract out the 1.5-ish million gallons that they're gonna get into irrigation, so that gets them about $9,000 more at about 54,000 is what they would be at. So that's a substantial increase, you know, we're in the 25 percentage points, things like that, but it's not a huge number, but, you know.
54,000 though is pulling off that, I mean, the usage was based on the old usage is 45, but even with pulling off that, it's gonna be 50. Am I remembering that right?
If, if you subtract out the, we, we, I think we're assuming 1.4 million dollar, or 4 million gallons of irrigation from the football stadium fields in that area. So if you subtract that out, you'd be at about $54,000 compared to 45.
Well, and we're also ignoring the fact that they can always use less water to water their fields. If they don't like their bill, we can tell them the same thing to tell the residents. You don't need to be watering it as much. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not.
Yeah, I think they, they try to maintain a, a standard that, you know, the, all the associations and schools are used to playing on, right? And the football team and, you know, soccer teams, right? Like they want it to be good condition, so, you know, they, they have a little bit, I think, less flexibility than maybe a resident that can let it go a little bit dormant. I don't know.
Probably, because if it goes dormant and then you play on it, it's gonna actually kill the grass, you know?
I think there's a little bit of flexibility there, but probably not, not as much as a resident, in my, in my opinion, I guess.
Claudia, questions, comments?
I'm kind of with Kathleen in that I think that residents are shouldering their share of the burden. I think the school, it's time for the school to do the same.
Well, they have been. I just, and that's why I asked, how much water do they use and how much is, is their revenue that we get from the school? And it's pretty even, it's, you know, 3.5.
Right, but when it's even, then they're not contributing anything to the future infrastructure that's needed either. If it's a one-to-one ratio, they're not going over to pay the future infrastructure that's needed.
Um, no, they are, because it's built into our, our rates.
Well, it's built into the new rates, but they're still at different tiers, so they're, they're, they're not paying as much as the residents are for their percentage of usage.
Okay, I'm not following you. Because I, it, to me, if, if our total revenue is 100,000 and, and the revenue that we, that the rates that we decide on are based on our need, operating expenses, ongoing operating expenses, as well as then future infrastructure, not everything.
But we need a bond for the future, so we're not.
But we have payments, payments are included in that. So all of that is included in there and our resident rates are based on that, our commercial rates are based on that in the school, so it's all, it's all built in.
Right, but the rates need to go up because the future infrastructure is growing faster than we have in the fund to cover it.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that these rates that we're recommending or the tiers are off, I'm just saying if you look at it, they have been paying their fair share.
Right, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any?
I think we'd stipulate it as far as going with these rates and take them a step back up in the future.
Okay, okay.
I think I'm philosophically different from everybody else.
I understand. So what we'll do is we'll bring this back. This will be on our agenda for approval. And of course, if you don't agree, then you vote no, and then the majority, we move forward with the majority. Okay, all right. Next, we have the discussion about our conservation campaign.
All right. You, you sure, you sure can.
Okay, so, so back this summer, when, or fall, when people started getting their bills, you know, we got a lot of angry people. So I contacted some of the big users and invited them to a meeting and many of them decided not to come. It's like, okay, don't, don't complain now. Anyhow, but we did, we did have a meeting and, and one of the things that came out of that is, the campaign that we did last year was too wordy and, and, you know, it was too much information almost. Okay, fine, I get it, people are very, and, and the comment was, you know, people are really busy and you see this, this, this sheet with all these, all this information on it, you're not gonna take time to read it. And I, quite frankly, I agree. And so I wanted to make sure that we have a campaign that's visually impactful, that people see and, and they go, oh, and they notice it and there's not as much reading to do, like it's more, it's still information. Does that, so that's kind of why I wanted to talk about this a little bit, because I think we could do a better job on our campaign. Is that, we did a great job last year, but I think we could do better.
Oh, yeah, and I read through the whole entire thing. I read through it with the corporate marketing process. My feeling is that you've covered the bases, so now we just have to look at what the design work's actually going to be, what the colors are used, what the words, the whole bit. But I, I think you've covered the bases.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the, if I may, the biggest change and the thing that we're doing different is, is reading the meters monthly and then getting that kind of more real-time feedback. That's gonna be a little bit of more burden on, on Gary's staff and Brian's staff to do that. But it's, it's something that I think I received feedback on, maybe Brian, I don't know who I'll receive feedback that, you know, I got a bunch of times, well, it would have been nice to know that my bill was gonna be this high. Well, you know, we did all these things, you know, but we didn't give the kind of more real-time feedback. So that, that's the, the one thing that's really significantly different than what we did last year was, you know, somebody that's trending toward being in the top tier and we're gonna have to figure out what that cutoff is. You know, we're gonna try to let them know that they're trending that way so they can't then come back after they get their Q3 bill and say, well, I didn't know that my bill was gonna be high, you know, where there'd be a couple of different touchpoints.
So the monthly meter reading will start in May or in June? Just fully depending on, obviously, the weather, but if it's a normal, I'll just say normal, where we get some rain and some heat, but not, you know, abnormally dry.
Yeah, I think, I think it, the, the way that this is written out, we can change this, this was all just kind of brainstorming and that's what this kind of session is about, is that we do the initial monthly read in May and then we would do June to compare it and then if you're trending from May to June to start going high, then we would say, here's a door hanger, you're trending high. And then we would keep building off that each month, so. Um, and then we would keep building off that, uh, each month, so, um, one of the moving parts here that, that will make this a little easier is the meter installation that, that was approved, um, that'll, the, the new meters will be a little bit easier for Gary's people to, to read. Um, the processing side on Brian's side will be the same, um, just to kind of look at the, the usage and flag that, so. And we'll have to figure this out because we haven't done this, so this, there might be some, something that we're missing and maybe, I don't know, Brian wants to weigh in, but we, we haven't done this, we haven't done this, uh, monthly reading, but, um, I think we can do it.
Is it, would it be possible for people to, let's say, sign up for a monthly reading versus having to read all of them or would that be more work?
That would be way more work.
That would be a lot more work to have individual reads for everybody.
Okay.
We're going to do that, we might as well switch to monthly billing and save everybody time.
Yeah. But you're going to be doing a monthly reading, right?
Yeah, and it's just a drive-by. So I mean, that would just be the, once it's programmed into the equipment, you just do the, you know, a drive-by and, you know, I might actually reads it, where if you're going to do individual homes and you got a key in each individual MXU number and you actually have to wait for it to read back and.
Okay.
So it is more time-consuming. We do that on final reads if you're selling your house.
Yeah.
But if you're going to do that for a lot of people, yes, that's a lot of time consumption.
Okay, well, and that's the next, the next step actually is at some point we may want to or have to go to a monthly billing. Um, it's more cost, um, probably another full-time or at least part-time.
It's like three-quarters to a full-time person, then we're not going to fool ourselves or, you know, I mean, it's, you're doing it 12 times versus four, so.
Right.
I mean, there's, it's a real easy thing to say, go to monthly billing, but there's a lot of.
I know.
Um, additional work to expect the three finance stamp right now to be able to do it would not be really, I think, uh, feasible, I guess.
Well, and to field the calls and to.
That's the big thing is the calls.
Right. But, um, I mean, again, as we grow, we might have to go to that, so keep that in mind if we.
The other comment, I guess I'd have, um, I know I read this briefly after it was put together, but, um, second quarter last year, we really didn't have any issues. To me, this just seems a little early. I, I would see more reading monthly in June, July, or July, August versus second quarter, we had zero to none, you know?
Yeah.
Zero little issues, so I guess to me, I don't know, I mean, we've canceled Tristana in May or because it's, or in May because it's snowing or raining or, you know, I think, I don't know why we'd have to read in May and June, I guess, I mean, to me that's.
For sure not in May, probably.
Yeah, I mean, for sure not May and I don't even know June.
I think in June you need to because June starts the third quarter, so if you want people to be able to affect third quarter.
July, July starts the third quarter.
Well, it starts June 20.
Well, yeah, I, you're pretty much right.
But by then people have probably set their sprinklers for what they're going to be, so.
Well, I think it's a good idea too to, to start a baseline that's low, you know that it's low, and so then the next month is going to be higher, I don't know, but and that'll get people thinking. And, you know, when I was out this fall, I mean, that, a lot of people said, wow, you know, if I had known earlier, I, you know, I would have changed my watering, so I think this is a great idea. Yeah, I think doing it is, starting at a point where there's not a lot of irrigation need would be good because then they know what, you know, they're, they're using during the winter.
And I think our second quarter read would be June 21st, that would be your, your baseline, they, they would get that with their second quarter bill. I mean, Dawn, Dawn's done this many times, so she, I'm trying to say it right, so then I think July, July 21st would be your next monthly read.
Like you said, monthly billing or reading.
A monthly.
Around the 20th to the 24th, somewhere in there.
But if.
So you already have one.
You have the one with the quarterly reads, you have that one around June 20, 20th, and then to me it would make sense to do a monthly read July 20th or whatever.
But if it's really dry, if it's really dry in May or, and/or the beginning of June, do you want to do it sooner? Because I, I think that's, I mean, I don't know.
We can, we can kind of make the, the game time decision if that's the case, if it's snow on the ground yet and, and, you know, then we obviously, we won't do it. Um, but yeah, the, the idea was to establish that baseline so that we have good data just in case June was also maybe hot and dry and, um, but yeah, I, I guess if, if it, if the weather doesn't dictate that we should do it, that's, doesn't make sense. But yeah, we will be doing a, a read in June no matter what.
The other thing is, um, if it's raining and, and either the police or the public works people or anybody is driving around and they see irrigation going, that, you know, maybe we could just make a note and also do a door hanger saying, you know, check your irrigation, it doesn't need to be on when it's raining. I mean.
Well, we, we have that.
We do have that, so, yep.
Well, I'm not saying that, no, I'm not saying that the, the police do that, I'm just saying make a note of it, somebody can contact them, say, hey, you do realize.
We do have door hangers in our vehicles that we can hang on their doorknob, that you can check off what's happening so they're aware of it.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, any news, any new irrigation system is supposed to have rain sensors on them anyways.
Okay.
Um, so that's maybe one thing that we should probably look at hammering with the conservation program, is to make sure that people are aware of these, that they're supposed to be on there if they don't have them.
Oh, they've got them, they don't know what they are.
Well, exactly. I mean, you get, they get turned off and that stuff, but we should make sure that they are on, you know, that they're using them properly, that they are functioning, and maybe even look at if you don't have one, maybe, you know, I know I see you had it in here that, you know, you can do the new controller, but maybe look at doing a cost share, hey, if you want one, you know, we'll supply you one at a cheaper cost, I mean, because that right there, you know, you see that a ton when we're out there. I mean, the middle of a rainfall, I mean, it could be an inch an hour and you see them going like crazy.
I know.
You know, so.
It's like, why are they paying for the water when it's free?
Why do they pay for it after, you know, three inches of rain and they're still watering a week later? You know, I mean, it's just the way it is. People don't have any idea how their systems work.
Well, should we do a, um, a direct, maybe that was in here, I can't remember, a direct mailer sometime like in April?
That is in here, yeah, postcard reminder to all residents on the city water system to check their irrigation system for proper setting.
And the new rates went out on this mailer.
Yes.
So everyone knows what the rates are, assuming they flipped over the postcard.
Yeah, that's one of the things, if you, if you notice, now we have the back bill, the backside of the bill that we're using for messaging as well.
I haven't seen those because I don't get a water bill.
Yeah.
I don't think, you don't, you don't have, yeah, none of us except you get a water bill.
I was going to bring it, I forgot.
Yeah, that was.
Um, one question I have is what's the threshold for reaching out, you know, I put 100,000 gallons per quarter, so like 33,000?
I think, no, I, I think, um, per quarter, I think 65, that's our.
Well, yeah, so the monthly rate, like if someone hit 30,000 gallons for the month of June, they, they're, they're going to get there, they're going to hit the third tier, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so anything over 65? Is that what we want to do or do we want to do over 100?
Well, if you're doing monthly.
Well, for who to read?
Yeah, so, so if we do monthly, so somebody that's trending would have like 33,000 gallons for that month.
They would probably.
They would get it.
Yes.
I, I don't want to do it where like everybody's getting a door hanger.
No.
Because if we do 65,000, I think.
No, I think we pull the high users from last summer and anyone over 90.
90.
Gets a notification.
That's the number.
Or gets a monthly read.
So it would be 30.
30,000, 30,000 a month. Okay, yeah, we need that just so, you know, we can, so we'll do 30,000 a month.
Okay.
If anybody exceeds that, they'll get the little door hanger.
That's a lot of water.
It is.
It's a lot of water.
Especially, so I had Jasper and Brian send me fourth quarter numbers.
Yeah.
And for fourth quarter, um, anyone who was over 65, that was only 22 people and most were the HOA and the school.
Okay.
So, answered my question. Yeah, there's not a lot of people hitting the third tier.
No.
Any other time of the year. And I mean, the, the bottom tier is 30, right?
25.
25.
25.
Yeah.
And there's, I mean, there's not, no. Everybody's just using it for irrigation.
Wouldn't it be easier to call 30 people than do door hangers?
Well, that was quarter four, so quarter three, there was.
600, over 600 people that were over the 65,000, so it was.
Yeah. We're, we're open to any ways that we can communicate with, with the people to get the message to them, you know?
Well, we'll do Facebook and then also on our website. So when we send out these cards and notifications, um, it, we should have our website and how to, how to go to the, um, water, there should be a special water thing there where they can just click on that and then they can get information.
We'll have, we'll have that on the front page. I think there, there was something there, if it's not still there, um, we can definitely.
And then we'll, we should get that information out, um, during our, our newsletter and our snail mail newsletter, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll try and as much as possible.
Yeah.
Longer term, it seems like kind of trending down the water usage is important, um, like with new developments, can, can we maybe do something about saying, hey, you don't need water everywhere, or, you know, just give them some flexibility that they might not have now, or, you know, I imagine your HOA has, you know, strict rules on how everything needs to look, so there's a certain amount of water usage built into that. Um, is there some kind of longer-term thing we could do or say, well, if you want to plant some things that don't need as much water, uh, go ahead and not get in trouble with the HOA or something like that?
So a couple of things that we're doing right now is that new developments have to do, um, stormwater pond irrigation.
Yeah.
And so, um, that will at least take them, that, that'll, I mean, so it's still using water resources, you know, so, which is a finite resource, but, um, it'll at least take the pressure off of our public system. And so, um, and I think some of the, um, areas in Woodland Cove actually are on the pond system.
Oh, yeah, all, everything from phase three going forward has ponds.
However, what they're finding out now and what they're going to have to do is because of the lack of rain, they now have to dig their own, um, shallower wells in order to fill those ponds, in order to supplement their irrigation. So that's going to be, but that's their issue, um, and they have to pay for that. But moving forward, I think we're going to try and get people off of, um, the city water for irrigation, because it's just so expensive. All this water we're putting through our treatment plant, you don't need filtered water to put on your lawn, you know? In fact, it's probably less healthy.
The big thing is educating people on how long their sprinklers should be running, when they should run them, and not just trusting the builders preset irrigation systems.
Oh, okay. So you've seen quite a variation within the.
Yeah, I mean, so last summer, we don't water a lot and we resotted our backyard and I didn't hit the third tier. So if you do it well, you don't need as much water as, you know, a lot of people are using, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, people over water, I think, um, so I think just all of those venues, the Facebook, the website, in our newsletter, um, all of that, and then I think every time we send out a water bill, we should have something on the back about conservation. And ultimately, it will save them not just current money, I mean, not just on their current bill, but going forward because what, what this is doing is triggering us having to put in more infrastructure sooner than later. So for that, all of those reasons, um, it's good to try and conserve.
One other thing I'll, I'll note, I shared some links to other cities that have water conservation programs. That's something that we want to delve into a little bit, that's, we definitely can, it's, it, there's some involvement, a lot of those cities are larger, they have, uh, water resource people dedicated to that type of thing. We don't have that type of person here, so we'd have to figure that out if we were to go down that route or, you know, have a, maybe a scaled back version of a Waterwise program, but, um, that's something that, you know, may be beneficial. Um, the Met Council, uh, some of, some of the, the programs, the rebates that they have are related to the Met Council and, you know, you can get like a, a irrigation controller rebate or something like that. Um, I'm not sure how many people on our water system have an outdated irrigation controller, a lot of the houses are fairly new.
Not necessarily, in the northern part, not so much, but.
Yeah, so there could be a, a need for that where they get an updated, you know, so, but there's something like that, it's kind of, it's involved, uh, we need a little bit of time to plan for that, but if that's something we want to look at, we can, we can, we can look into it and, and come up with, you know, I don't know if there'd be a staff.
If there would be a grant program, you know, where we would get grant dollars probably, but, um, I hate to add it, um, to our water because it just means higher water bills, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it does, um, and we need somebody, we need somebody to be able to manage it, you know, and, and manage the rebates and all that. It's, it's, it's fairly intensive.
I've never been a big fan of rebates. I mean, people would use what you, have the rates be what they should be for what we, the city needs and have people, I don't, giving money back and forth seems a lot of extra admin time and stuff, just.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of that, I guess, or so.
Yeah, that would be a lot of admin.
Resources to do it right now.
The, the idea would hopefully be that we can access grant money from somebody else other than us for rebates and it, we wouldn't be coming out of our revenue funds, but, um, yeah, it, it is, it's, it's intensive, it's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of, um, interaction with the public and things like that to try to get it rolling and something there, it's, I don't know, mixed results if they're successful.
But you know, the other thing, just information too is, um, I mean, I'm thinking of Hunter's Crest and Turtle Creek, those are older, I mean, they're like over 20 years old now. I know it seems like that, that long ago, but if those irrigation systems were put in 22 years, 24 years ago, um, they might need updating. So again, just that information, um, if you haven't updated your irrigation system in the last 20 years, you could save a lot of money, you know, if you update it.
That's where the savings were coming, not just for a $5 rebate, I know I'm being